First of all, I just want to thank, if we have anyone here, the folks from the UNC Asheville Save the Woods and their advocacy in the community around this and bringing this to our attention. And as a result, this particular letter has been drafted to Chancellor Van Nord. And of course, in the meantime, it was announced that there would be a pause on the Millennium Campus and the projects. And so I'm going to turn this over to Commissioners Ball, Sloan, and Wells for any further comments or discussion and then questions to Commissioners about moving forward with this letter to the Chancellor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think it's, I think the letter is, is great. And I think, I think all my colleagues on helping kind of focus group the language and the ideas here. It's been an iteration as this process has evolved. I guess I'd just say a few thoughts about, I think it's important in this moment to kind of state our, our values in terms of what we, what we care about, what we're concerned about, what, what is, what it is that we believe in going forward. We certainly, or I certainly believe in UNC Asheville and its future and its importance to the community. It's essential that it succeeds in the long term. Certainly love the idea of a professional soccer team as well. The Asheville Soccer Club certainly don't oppose their goals and existence and love taking my kids to the games. Would love to take my kids to an expanded and enhanced sports team one day. That would be, that would be great. But redeveloping or developing for the first time the Millennium Campus of the university is a big deal. And I think something that we should work on collaboratively and collectively as a community. I, for example, the idea of, you know, retail and housing, I think in kind of urban Asheville is, is something that we, this board largely supports. It's, it's kind of mentioned in our comprehensive plan, sort of, in terms of future growth ideas. So I just wanted to put all those kind of thoughts and values on paper and submit that to the, to the university. So they understand where we're coming from and they understand that we want to, we want to partner with them and help them succeed and are happy to work together with them on that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Sloan.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think Commissioner Sloan said it well. We definitely appreciate the community stepping up and coming to us. I think we feel an incredible responsibility to, to pass forward those concerns that we've heard and just really share appreciation for the university slowing this down, taking this opportunity to make sure we don't miss a chance to do something even bigger and better. We've appreciated the Chancellor taking time to meet with some of our Commissioners, with City Council members and really hearing what the community has to say. And we think this is a great opportunity to really work more closely with them to understand their challenges and ensure that UNCA continues to be a cornerstone of our education and cultural power here in Western North Carolina. So we, in, in hopes of doing right by UNCA and our community, look forward to sending this letter, we hope.
I think they both said it very well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from other Commissioners? All right, I think I will say, I think I'm the only UNC Asheville alumna that is on the Board of Commissioners. And seeing our Board of Commissioners come together in the best interest of our community and the university and the future and success of the university is reassuring to me. For those folks who haven't necessarily seen the letter yet, we have stated our values as a Board of Commissioners specifically around our comp plan and the work around the comp plan and ecological stability, as well as the fact that our local government was shut out of decisions in the General Assembly. And so we are asking in the, in the final statement of this letter for a member of the Board of Commissioners to be appointed to serve on that commission. So we look forward to sending this to the Chancellor. Do we have a full consensus to direct our clerk to move forward? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate the hard work around this. Our second letter, we have a full letter, a full agenda of letters today, is to support Advent Health and their certificate of need to develop a fixed PET scanner at its approved hospital that is underway in Weaverville. Mr. Graham Fields has reached out. We've supported Advent's work in the past. And there is a draft letter here to send to the Chief of Healthcare Planning and the Certificate of Need at DHHS in Raleigh. Are there any comments, questions, edits that need to be made? Or any concerns, conversation?
I'm definitely supportive. And I hear a lot from the folks in Weaverville and the whole North Buncombe area, really actually in some other areas of the county as well, that are very supportive of Advent Health and certainly being able to access more of their medical needs in that area. So I feel good about supporting their efforts.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Wells.
We got to meet one of their representatives at the local reception and it seemed very positive. We were invited to come out and support and see a little bit of what's happening there in the near future. So always think it's wonderful to have a diversity of options when it comes to healthcare in Western North Carolina.
Absolutely. Do we have a consensus to direct our clerk to move forward?
We do, yes.
All right, great. Thank you all. And our third and final letter is regarding the Mission Hospital Trauma Center designation. We have not had a public meeting since this was brought to our attention. And since this is the business of the public, we are bringing that forward today to further discuss. Commissioner Ball, would you like to give a little more detail on this letter?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. I appreciate the chance to bring this forward. So the North Carolina Office of Emergency, excuse me, Office of Emergency Medical Services within North Carolina DHHS had reached out to us on July 15th and just noted that we had an opportunity to submit comments on Mission Hospital's application to become a Level One Trauma Center. They're currently a Level Two Trauma Center. And this could bring potential opportunity and great things to the community. But I think it's important that we also flag any concerns that we have. I think given some of the recent developments and short-staffing issues, a number of issues we've seen at Mission, I think we should flag that for them and really encourage them to look into that. The application has not been made public. We don't know exactly what's in it. We don't know what, exactly what the plan is for Mission Hospital. But this is an opportunity for us to ask the folks at DHHS who will be touring Mission Hospital on September 25th and 26th to look into some of these issues that have happened and ensure that we have an opportunity. They really utilize the opportunity to look into any pitfalls, primarily as it relates to quality of care and costs to patients. So really just encouraging them to do their due diligence as they look into this.
Questions or comments from other Commissioners?
I'll also state that the letter doesn't request approval or denial, just simply encourages DHHS to, to do that due diligence.
Thank you. Do we, do we want, is this one, I think there had been some conversation about moving this to a formal vote at our 5:00 PM meeting at New Business? Or do we want to direct the clerk to move forward?
I think there's, I don't know, there's some value in adding it to our regular agenda to gain more attention from the public.
All right. We will amend the agenda for New Business at the start of our 5 o'clock meeting when we approve the agenda. And we'll take an official vote there.
Madam Chair, also, I just want to flag that I did reach out to DHHS this morning and found out that Heather Majernik, who had the letter addressed to you, has now retired. And I have a correct contact. And I let them know that even though they had requested this by August 15th, we needed an opportunity to discuss it. And so they are waiting for a potential letter from us.
Thank you for taking care of that and getting the correct information. And we'll get that to Sarah as well. And I'll make a note that we're going to add this at 5:00 PM. Thank you, Commissioner Ball. And thanks Commissioners for some engagement around some really important things happening in our community. And we'll go ahead and move in. We have a full agenda with staff updates today. Avril, would you like to kick us off with our Helene recovery update?
Commissioners, so we'll start off first with our guests that are visiting us today. We have Stephanie McGar, who's the Deputy Secretary. I see she actually made it in person. She was supposed to be online. So thank you for being here, Stephanie. And she'll give us an update on Renew NC. And then we'll go to Drew Christie for an renew, an update on Grow NC before we get to staff updates.
Thank you. Stephanie, it's nice to see you with us in person. Thanks for being with us.
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually a native of Buncombe County. And then I moved to Rutherford County and live in Haywood County. My parents live there. So I look for any and every opportunity to come to the mountains. It was not a hardship. Thank you for having me. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our Renew NC program. I'm with the Division of Community Revitalization, which as you may know, is a new division that was created by executive order with Governor Stein when he took office. And our program, our division is Community Revitalization, but our program that we, it branded as Renew NC. And then we have a housing component, an infrastructure component, and an economic revitalization component as well. And so our job is to administer the $1.4 billion in HUD funding for community development, block grant disaster recovery that the state received. This is of course separate and apart from what the City of Asheville received. So we wanted to go through the process with you. We have contracted with Horn, who is our implementation vendor for the single-family housing program. And their job is to make sure that people know about the program, apply for the program, and then manage the builders. We as a state have contracted with the builders separately. And we did that in part because of some lessons that we learned in the past where some states, they call it the one neck to choke model, where they have the implementation vendor directly contract with the builders. But then if you have a problem with your implementation vendor and you have to fire them, you then fire all your builders. So we chose to do a separate model where we contract with builders and we also contract with the implementation vendor. So we opened our program application on August 16th, right? 16th, yep. And we've already, we're over, I think, 1,300? I'm sorry, June 16th. I can't even remember what month it is. It's, it's been a long couple of months, y'all. So what we do is, the program helps to, it's really meant to be the funding of last year's award. And it's meant to help those homeowners who have no really other option and they're low to moderate income families. They are in what is called a HUD-defined mid or most impacted and distressed areas, which HUD defined based on FEMA individual assistance application and SBA loan application data from October of last year, so shortly after the storm hit. And then we added some additional counties as a result because we felt like there were other parts of Western North Carolina who, that were also impacted. And we wanted to make sure that they were also eligible for the program. So the program seeks to repair, reconstruct, or replace Helene-damaged owner-occupied, single-family housing. And it, so far, what we're seeing is about 75% of the applicants, they're probably going to need a full reconstruction of their home, not just a repair. The repair, the, the damage is so severe that it's beyond the repair stage. We provide contract-grade finishes to program houses. And then we have a full list of FAQs that you can find on our website. Generally, I'd say that again, this is one of the lessons learned from Eastern North Carolina and the Florence and Matthew Recovery, that we gave homeowners too many options as a state. And we negotiated too much on the refinishes. And it was too difficult and time-consuming and expensive. And we were able to, as a state, serve fewer people and it took longer. So in order to be eligible, you have to meet all of the criteria for the program. So they had to own the home at the time of Hurricane Helene, and they must still own the property. It has to be a primary residence. I'm sure you're aware, there are definitely parts of Western North Carolina where a lot of people owned homes that were damaged, but they were secondary residences. Those are not eligible. And that is a HUD requirement. So we obviously have to work within the federal constraints of the program. It has to have a tieback for a damage as a result of Helene. It has to be an eligible structure type. And then applicants must be current on their property taxman, taxes or have a payment plan in good standing, same with their mortgage. And low to moderate income is a qualification. So it's 60% of area median income, 80% or less of area median income, up to 120%. And we have the data because HUD gives us. So if you're interested, we can talk about that specifically for Buncombe County or parts of Buncombe County. But HUD gives us those requirements, and those are part of the federal rules. So these are the documents that people need to apply. We have three, we have multiple ways you can apply. You can apply via our website. We also have our implementation vendor calling and talking to folks. You can apply in person. We have three in-person, Marion, Asheville, and Boone. And then you can also, we go to various outreach for various events. And we have people from Horn there who are there to meet residents where they are. So this is our process. We have just made one, our first award determination, which I'm glad to say is the fastest that anyone's done this in the country, which is hard to believe when you think about the damage and how long this takes. So I just would remind you, this is the funding of last resort. So by the time we're getting to CDBGDR, we anticipate that a lot of homeowners have either found ways to repair their homes themselves, they've taken out loans, they've had insurance, or they've had to decide to do buyout or are making the decision potentially to do buyout. So this is, shockingly, when you live in the hurricane zone, it's hard to believe that this is fast. But this is actually fast in terms of the way most of the programs work around the country. And so that's where we are in terms of the process. Again, we have over 1,300 applications, I think 141 for Buncombe County. And we've looked at assess the damage for 79 of them. 71 of them so far are going to be full reconstruction.
Is that statewide?
That's just for Buncombe County. 1,300 is statewide. For Buncombe County alone, 141. We've assessed the damages. So that's one of the first things you have to do. I'm not sure if I can go back. Yep. Damage assessment. And then 71 of the 79 to date are going to be full reconstruction. So I know y'all have gotten some questions about what documents you needed to apply. And early on, we had, so Horn came in, they had job fairs in Western North Carolina, hired folks from Western North Carolina to staff these centers to work, be case managers, work directly with Western North Carolinians who are applying for the program. And they are doing training for those folks. I think we had a couple of, not, a couple of people who got not the best information on tax information and what they would be required. So we've worked through that. And I think we've smoothed that process out. But these are the requirements for the documentation. And we do have an appeals process. So we can appeal to, first to Horn, and then it comes to us to make sure that if someone pauses and they think they should be eligible, but they're not, that we can investigate to make sure we have what we need, assess their eligibility. So this is, okay. Oh, good. This is even better data. So we've gotten through, we have a big body of applications submitted, but then confirming them as eligible. I think we're down to 141 right now. And up from 65, we have assessed 79 of the sites. I would say generally, when you have people who are considered ineligible, it could be income, it could be you have like dual homeowners who are married and both of them apply for the program. So obviously we'll kick you out. You can only get one application, not two. And so that's where we are on Buncombe County. And the application period runs through December 31st. So we are working diligently to make sure that people know about it, they can apply before the application window closes. And I'm happy to answer questions and talk about, I'm sorry, I forgot. We're talking about our Renew NC other programs. So we are going to open up competitive grant funding for, in cooperation with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for multifamily housing. And then next year, we'll look at putting money towards affordable, single-family housing. Local governments will also be eligible applicants there. And then economic revitalization is really to support revitalization activities. And just to be clear, with the City of Asheville, they got their own HUD funding. We are running their single-family program for them. We're their sub-recipient, which is sort of weird. And then they are also eligible for these other programs as well. So infrastructure is the last program that we're talking about, where local governments are also eligible applicants. And what we envision there is that you may not have, you may have had an infrastructure issue that you didn't fully get funded for, or FEMA only allows you to build back to what you had. And so we would be able to use CDBGDR funding to help supplement to build back to what you need as opposed to what you had and/or to address some of those gaps in funding that we know exist.
Thanks, Stephanie. Are there questions for her?
Yeah, I have a few.
All right, please.
First of all, thank you for being with, here with us in person. I have some questions about the single-family housing. But before I ask those, with these, these programs here that you mentioned, like the multifamily housing, workforce housing, all of that, is there already information out there detailing, so we can be thinking about that in relation to the different projects that we have in mind?
So we have been meeting with the Councils of Government, the League of Municipalities, the Association of County Commissioners, and the School of Government at the staff level to make sure we understand what the needs are. We are still developing our policies and procedures, which we're, we have to do first. So we're trying to figure out what the needs are while also addressing our policies and procedures. So I think that we have worked with Buncombe directly with your staff, but we also will welcome any other thoughts on projects that you have as well.
Thank you. And then for single-family housing, what, oh, there you go. Can you hear me? So with the single-family housing, I attended the Governor's Advisory Council in July. So I think these numbers are accurate. And mentioned, you know, Buncombe County has about 11,000 damaged households and about 6,000 were designated LMI. And so with those kind of numbers, what are, you know, what are the expectations around outcomes for this single-family housing program that we're going to be able to meet? Because when I look, you know, when I look at 415 applications in three months, that doesn't seem like necessarily a lot to me. And so I'm just, I'm trying to kind of have realistic expectations, like out of that, how many of these households do you plan for this program to be able to help?
Well, we think we're going to run out of money. But statewide, HUD and state combined midwides, so not Buncombe County, the whole 28 county plus that one zip code in Mecklenburg where required to serve by HUD. We think we'll be able to serve 2,000 to 3,000 households, depending on how much damage there is and how much the replacement cost is. And I can already tell you, we're having to raise the cap on our replacement from $375,000 to $450,000 per home, for the largest homes.
Okay. So the expectation is about 2,000 to 3,000 households total for this?
Yes, yes. And I had not, I don't know that I knew that Buncombe County, I had not seen the 6,000 number. Now, we got from, there's been multiple damage assessments that have been done. Some of them are estimates and some of them are actual numbers. And I think we have been working with the counties to get actual numbers, which I think are usually better data. But the first estimate that we got was 72,000 homes statewide. And then FEMA came in less. It would, the way it kind of looks if I had to generalize the data, you have FEMA individual assistance data. So if people applied for FEMA, you have SBA loan data, if people applied for that. And then you have the counties. And some of the counties have been able to do damage assessments and figure it out, and some have not. The county data has tended to be higher than FEMA.
And then I guess when I look, like I look at the, you know, like the contract with Horn and all that, and I look at, I think about them, we have such need for helping people. And so I'm just like, I want to see outcomes, like I want to see people help. And like when I looked over that, it said that, you know, they're going to get 10,000 applications. And then I look at the number of applications that they've got so far. And at that Governor's Advisory Meeting is, you know, there was a nice graphic that showed like where people were learning about the program. And the majority were learning about the program, not from friends and family, not even from the outreach that Horn was doing. And so it just, it causes concern for me about whether or not they are doing the outreach that they really need to do to make sure they're getting into our community.
I think that is a legitimate concern. And it is certainly my responsibility to make sure that Horn is doing the job that they're supposed to be doing. And so part of the reason we wanted to get the counties to tell us where they saw the damage was, is because with the broader numbers that we have, it's not a clear picture. It's not, it's very hard to define the problem. And so how can I hold them accountable to what I think we need to be hitting in terms of applications, not only numbers, but locations? And I, I think that we had multiple concerns with them. And in the last two weeks, we have brought that to their attention. And they have changed their strategy. So you've seen, well, you may not have seen, but I can look at the trend over time. We went from 950 applications to 1,300 in a week and a half, two weeks? And part of that was, they have moved away from the sub-recipient that, or the subcontractor that they were using, which was a local group, but a new local nonprofit. And they have moved to more direct calling.
And when you say local, you don't mean here in Buncombe County?
They are in, mm.
No.
They're, Western North Carolina.
Okay.
They have employees in multiple locations. I think one of them is, is in, he's in Weaverville. He's in Weaverville, I think.
But so you've moved on from that strategy and?
Yes.
Looking at how, how they're dressed as well. I do appreciate that because I was not hearing from the community that there had been the type of outreach that we've been expecting since June. And when I asked people if they even had heard of this Patriot Relief, they said no.
Yeah, Patriot Relief is their subcontractor. Going back to what I, what another state referred to me as the one neck to choke model, that's partly why we have said to Horn, you need to fix this. We need more, we need to make sure we have applicants and from the right places. I'm right now candidly less concerned about Buncombe County than I am some of your neighbors to the north, who when you look at it per capita, have had higher damage, even though they don't have the volume of people. And when you look at it on a map in terms of the volume of damage, obviously Swananoa, Black Mountain, that whole area, you see higher levels of damage. But when you look at it per capita, Yancey County has actually had more damage. So we have to keep our eye on all of that to make sure that they are getting the kind of applications we think geographically and also numerically.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Great questions. Thank you.
So I guess first, just wanted to confirm something I heard you say before. Based on what you're seeing so far in terms of quantity of applicants for the single-family program or this form of single-family program, you think you'll have too many applicants eventually?
Yes, I do.
To, to the end, to where you'll use the, use the amount of money allocated by, by Commerce? Okay.
Yes. 807 million is what we've put into single-family housing.
Okay.
So help, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Help me understand if you're going to have more applicants than funding. How are you prioritizing the applications that you're receiving? Because, and maybe I'm not following the?
No, we do.
Very well, but?
We have.
Help us understand that.
Right. So we have four priorities. This is all laid out in our action plan. And there's a table that would be really helpful. And we can send that to you later if that would be helpful to you, too. But we start with the lowest income, so 60% or less area median income in the HUD mid area. So all of Buncombe County is in the HUD mid area. That's where HUD defined it as the most impacted and distressed. So mid is most impacted and distressed. And we also prioritize those people who have an older person in the home, also a child and/or a disability. So they're first, they're priority one. Priority two is just in the HUD mid, 60% or less area median income. Priority three, this is all under phase one, is 80% or less with a disability, a child or an elderly person in the home. And then priority four, 80% or less area median income. And then we move into the upper incomes from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have additional questions, Parker?
I think I just have two more, if I can remember the second one. I think I just have two more, if I can remember the second one. This is, this is kind of a vibes question and not meant to be a gotcha question, but, you know, we, none of us have gone through this before, right? And so, we also know that a lot of folks in the mountains don't trust the government, something we saw in the hours after Helene and the days.
Yes.
And so, I can imagine a lot of folks have experienced a federally-funded, state-led, renewency, rebranded program, like this has got to be new to everybody. What have you seen so far in terms of people's trust in this, the system, the institution, however you want to?
Well, I think we all know, and I mean, again, I grew up in Burke, Rutherford, and Haywood Counties, so I think we all know that trust has to be earned.
Yeah.
And that is a challenge, but that is also why we hired folks from Western North Carolina. And I wasn't chuckling at your gotcha, I just, I've testified before the legislature six times, so, bring it.
I'll try to make it harder, yeah.
Okay. I would just say that trust has to be earned, and so, we have to do that. And we are trying our best to get out there and talk to people, but I do think there is a level of distrust out there still, and I think we're going to fight that through to the end. And I think until we start building houses and people start seeing it, and they start seeing it with their neighbors, it's going to be very difficult to prove it to them. And I really don't blame them. But I also think that's why our county data is showing that we have more damage than the FEMA data shows. And what stinks about that is that we got our award of our dollars based on how many people applied for FEMA.
I personally think it's too, too early, but you, but we're there, so I'm going to ask you, you know, at the end of this process, how can Commerce kind of reorganize itself in terms of these dollars to, I don't know, come, come back with a second bite of the apple for, for single-family housing? Is that, is that a possibility?
You know, I don't know. I think we have an opportunity to potentially go back to the federal government, which we've already done several times, and Governor Stein has spent some time in DC. We are part of an executive order from President Trump with the State of California and their wildfires, so we got like the special status in North Carolina. It's at the end of that executive order, if you want to go read it. And so, to the extent we can use that to potentially make the case for more funds, we will. But I think what you have to do in order to do that, you have to get the data, you have to have the applicants. You have to show that people, you have people that want to, that have the need, it's called an unmet need, that the unmet need is there, and then we can demonstrate it to HUD.
Okay.
And in Congress.
Gotcha. Last question, the, the competitive grant coming in 2026 on your slide here for workforce housing for ownership?
Yes.
Is purchasing land an eligible expense in that bucket of?
I don't know the specifics, because we haven't worked all of it out yet. I will tell you that Haywood County tried this with CBGDR, Fred, from Tropical Storm Fred, and they've had a really, really hard time over the last three years trying to find land that would work, that they could build affordable housing on. So, I'm, I'm worried. I think that might be one of our hardest parts of this program.
Other questions for Stephanie? All right. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right. I believe Drew Christie is joining us from Grow NC. It's nice to see you, Drew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Drew Christie with Grow NC, which is the Governor's Recovery Office for Western North Carolina. Governor Stein created this on his first day in office. We are the, kind of the mechanism to gather information, kind of cut through the bureaucratic red tape, to help people west North Carolina recover. And I will say that Manager Pender and myself, as well as Grow NC, have a standing bi-weekly meeting, so we do share information and figure out ways that the state can help Buncombe County, and Buncombe County can relay information and help the state in recovery. So, as you can see here, this is kind of a brief overview of what Grow NC is. Our main function is to coordinate with the state agencies and to help deliver Governor Stein's recovery vision, to get all the funding that they receive out as quickly as possible, and provide guidance and oversight to accelerate recovery, and again, to coordinate across state Our main pillars for the recovery effort are rebuilding safe housing, as Stephanie alluded to just a minute ago, restoring our infrastructure, revitalizing our economy, supporting our children and families, and supporting our farmers. Some of these slides are a little bit wordy, so I apologize about that, so it may take some time for me to go through these. As you can see, this is not Buncombe County-specific, this is Helene-specific, but almost $500 million in FEMA individual assistance has gone out to residents of Western North Carolina, and that also does include 600, 800 people that have received temporary housing from FEMA. Looking at infrastructure, almost 8 million cubic yards of right-of-way debris removed, has been removed across the region, and if we break that down for Buncombe County, Buncombe County has had, just Buncombe County alone, has 1 million cubic yard of right-of-way debris removal. The City of Asheville had, had 545,000 cubic yards of debris. Biltmore Forest, 537 cubic yards of debris. Weaverville, 38,000. Woodfin, 50,000. And Black Mountain's around there as well, too. So, it's, you know, that's, you know, almost 2.5 million cubic yards of debris from right-of-way has been removed just from Buncombe County alone. For waterway debris removal, region-wide, it's 8.6 million. For Buncombe County, again, Buncombe County-specific, 1.3 million cubic yards. City of Asheville, 317,000. Biltmore Forest, 7,000, and they've, both Asheville and Buncombe County have completed their waterway debris removal. Biltmore Forest has 7,000 cubic yards of debris, waterway debris removed at 50% complete, and Weaverville at 7,000 cubic yards, 75% complete. There's been a lot of input, not just, or funding, not just from the state and federal government, there's been a lot of input from philanthropic and nonprofit organizations, and the state has contributed to them as well to help rebuild our state and rebuild our region. Mountain True received $10 million from the state to help waterway debris removal and some beautification of our waterways. And they're working hard, not just in Buncombe County, but all across the region to help out. There's been, from the Small Business Administration, almost $400 million in SBA loans offered. I'll go to the next slide here. This past June, Governor Stein signed into law the $575 million in new funding, which is House Bill 1012, which is on top of House Bill 47, which was signed into law back in February. That brings our total, the, the state legislature is allocated, and we greatly appreciate the bipartisan unanimous votes for this funding from the General Assembly to, I believe it's $1.5 billion for Helene recovery funding. And again, we're still waiting on federal funds as well, too. But of that, $575 million, 24 million is to support economic recovery by boosting tourism industry, excuse me, the tourism, tourism industry, supporting local and regional economic development sites, and rebuilding local parks. $292 million is strength in critical infrastructure. $23 million to advocate and to advance housing recovery by supporting nonprofits that are engaged in housing, such as Baptist On Mission, Samaritan's Purse, et cetera. $81 million to rehabilitate waterways and land used by farmers, which I, I know Commissioner Wells and I, we've talked quite a bit about, you know, helping out farmers and the ways that the state and feds can use the money and leverage to help out farmers, which they're desperately in need of help. $80 million to repair public schools and universities, and 378 million for required state matching grants. So, again, I, I kind of covered some of this. 14 million cubic yards of total debris have been removed from right, from rights-of-way, waterway, and private property. The private, or, excuse me, private roads and bridge program, they have been allocated $175 million. 150 million of that is directly for new construction on people's private properties and roads. I believe there's been over 5,000 applications for private roads and bridge repairs. That application ends August 31st. There's another $25 million that will go to reimbursements. That application will open up sometime early in September. We wanted to make, or Department of Public Safety wanted to make sure that those application processes did not overlap, so they're closing out the, the new construction, and then, once that application closes, the reimbursement phase of the $25 million will open up. Again, that deadline is August 31st. Nearly 98% of all roads that were damaged during Helene, or from Helene, have been reopened, with 95% of them fully open. Obviously, the, the major example is I-40 in Haywood County going to Tennessee. That has a long way to go, but at least, you know, one lane in each direction is open. More than $11 million have been awarded for the Great Trails projects here in western North Carolina. Because as we know, getting people out in nature, and getting people hiking and getting involved in nature is, is the best way to, A, for me, restore the soul. I enjoy getting out and enjoying the, enjoying God's beauty. So, getting out in nature is something so important that the governor and the legislature want to make this a priority to help reopen our trails. So, moving on to the federal programs, so this is kind of a jarring slide here. If you look at Superstorm Sandy, which had $88 billion in total damages, 78% of that was funded by the federal government. Now, look, if you look at the bottom of that slide, for Helene, $60 billion in federal dam, in federal estimated damages, but yet we've only received 6% of the nearly $28 billion that the state has asked for from the federal government. That's, it's hard to swallow there. And the state is waiting on $187 million in FEMA public assistance money. That money is sitting on Department of Homeland Security Secretary Kristi Noem's desk, waiting for her signature. And she changed the process back in June to where any projects for local governments in the state over $100,000 have to be signed off directly by her. So, again, the state is waiting on $187 million in FEMA public assistance money. So, counties and municipalities are still having to foot the bill and, and coming out of their rainy day fund or coffers to cover normal expenses while other money has been allocated for projects that should be reimbursed by FEMA. Through the Environmental Protection Agency and North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, there's been, there are $685 million in disaster water and sewer funds. And you can see a breakdown here, 100, or $254 million for sewer projects, $23 million for decentralized sewer systems, and $409 million for water projects. The EDA has announced $1.45 billion in economic recovery funds, and I'm sure that Hillary Sherman with the EDA has been in touch with a lot of y'all to identify projects that would be good for this. In, in past years, each state got a portion of this. It was broken down, you know, say, North Carolina got $200 million, and, and that, that $200 million would solely be for North Carolina for projects to, or for agencies to apply for. Now, though, that money is nationwide, and all the applicants are in the same pool. So, all 50 states, plus all the territories, are fighting for this $1.45 billion. So, the, the EDA person is working hard here in North Carolina to make sure that North Carolina does get their fair share of the EDA funds. Looking forward, as we continue to move from response to recovery, some eligibility-based federal funds, funding streams are winding down. Examples, FEMA individual assistance and SBA loans. There is, and with renewency and with all the housing projects that will be going on, there is a scarcity for skilled labor, and we want to make sure that, you know, A, our community colleges and trades are up to skill or up to speed and have enough workers. So, we want, the state is working hard to figure out ways we can help all this, because once these housing projects start, that's going to be a big drain on the, the skilled Recently, Governor Stein brought into the fold Sharon Decker. Sharon Decker is the former Commerce Secretary under Pat McCrory. She has, also ran the Tryon Equestrian Center for 11 years. Sharon's fantastic. She is the Senior Advisor for Long-Term Recovery, so she reports directly to Governor Stein. She works with our office, but she is working on a long-term plan to help out all of western North Carolina recover from Helene. So, if there's anything, and again, as I stated, myself, Avril, and Tim Love meet twice a month, or at least twice a month, to talk about the needs of Buncombe County and what's going on. But if there's anything that comes up, please let me know directly as well. Last couple of slides here, just information about Grow NC. Our website is wncrecovery.nc.gov. And then here's my email address as well, if you need to reach me. It's drew, D-R-E-W, dot Christie, C-H-R-I-S-T-Y, at nc.gov. And with that, thank you, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Drew. So, I do have a quick question for you. We had a town hall last week and had heard a little bit about the reimbursements for private road and bridge work. Do you, can you share any additional details? What kind of documentation should residents have in order to participate, or there's still some details forthcoming?
I think all the details have been worked out. They need to have all receipts for every bit of construction that was done on the bridge. Obviously, if a philanthropic organization rebuilt the bridge, that individual would not be eligible for reimbursement, but if they spent out of their own money, any and all receipts would be required for eligible, or to be eligible for reimbursements.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, Commissioner Horton?
Thank you. What does the timeline look like for the road and bridge program?
Could you clarify, what do you mean by timeline?
Well, they start construction.
Construction, gotcha.
Those are the questions that I'm hearing out in the community, they want to know.
Yes. So, again, there's, there's been, I think it was, at last count, 5,400 applications for the private road and bridge. So, they are going through each of those and seeing... So they are going through each of those and seeing what, what each individual property needs to be, or what, excuse me, what each individual property needs to have done to get it up to safe standards. So that process is ongoing. They've just completed two bridges in Yancey County. I think one is about to be completed in Avery County. And I think one bridge is about to be complete here in Bunkham County as well, too. Governor Stein has kind of put hammer to the nail to Department of Public Safety to get these bridges and roads started and completed as quickly as possible. Because I, I do know, as, as a native of Bunkham County, we're coming up on kind of a stop date for construction to be able to pour concrete here in the west. Because if it gets too cold, you can't really pour concrete. So we want to make sure we get as many as we can, as soon as we can. So Governor Stein's working hard to make sure that Department of Public Safety gets those bridges, gets the work started, and gets it completed as best they can, as quickly as they can. So again, unfortunately, I can't give you a, a set timeline. It's, it's just kind of, as they progress, again, multifamily houses that are, that have a shared bridge, people with disabilities where they need emergency access are going to take top priority for private, for the private road and bridge program.
That's more information than I had.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Drew, quick question on private roads and bridges, and thank you for being here. It's good to see you. Thank you for all your work. I know there was an issue where HOAs or folks who, if multiple people, multiple, multiple people owned a bridge and had an easement, there was an issue with them being able to, to apply and, and receive funding. Have we been able to crack that egg? Is this, will they be eligible, if HOAs be eligible for private road and bridge funding?
My understanding is, and I will have to get back to you for sure on this, but I do believe that they are eligible. Again, it may not be, HOAs may not be the top priority, because again, kind of just like the, the renewancy, we're going to prioritize health and safety first before we move on to the HOAs. And, and, but again, I do believe that they are eligible, but I will double-check and get back with you, with you all for that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, because oftentimes we have neighborhoods back here, and they, you know, it's one bridge that serves the neighborhood, and that's the main thoroughfare for, for emergency services, emergency services getting back there. Then the other quick question I had on disaster water and sewer funding. Are y'all working with the city of Asheville? I know that we had to get a lot of equipment brought up the mountain. I, we were up there touring it recently, and one of the most interesting stories I heard was that some of that filtration system was actually headed to like a tomato factory plant, like a sauce plant. And we pulled it, the US government said, nope, we need it more up here. So we want to keep that system, and it's going to be really expensive. So are you in talks with Asheville about that?
We are, yes. Actually, a few weeks ago, myself, as well as Don Campbell, who is the number two at North Con Emergency Management, met with the city of Asheville to discuss specifically the waterway, or the, the water system up there. Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Couple of questions. Thanks for being with us, Drew. The, the five hundred and seventy-five million that you mentioned, and you have it broken down here with the specific programs, are all of those programs open yet? Or when will those be open for us to be able to access that funding?
So I do believe that all that funding is open and available. It has been certified by OSBM, so it should be at the, the state agencies now, and should be open. But again, it's, it's up to the agency to implement that. So I'll have to check on, you know, if you can give me specifics. I'd be happy to check on which programs you're asking about and, and see which ones are actually live and open.
Okay, thank you. And then back to the one hundred and eighty-seven million we're waiting on from FEMA, from public assistance. And so, and I know that you said they're sitting there on Secretary Noem's desk because of the decision that she's made to have to sign off on anything over a hundred thousand dollars. Does it seem very efficient to me? But is there anything that the state is doing to try to advocate and make some change with this? Because as you know, I mean, across western North Carolina, all of our local governments are desperately awaiting those funds, right, to get that payback, which makes a very big deal for our, big difference in our communities. And so I'm, I'm hoping the state is, in some way, working to, to try to change that so that we're not continuing to have this bottleneck.
Absolutely, yes. The, the governor is meeting at least once a month with the acting FEMA secretary, or FEMA administrator, to discuss these projects. If not more than once a month, I, I think it may be once a week. But also, the federal delegation of Senator Budd, Senator Tillis, Congressman Edwards, Congressman Moore, have all been advocating to the White House and to Department of Homeland Security to help release these funds. So we're, we're all working in unison to get this money released to the local governments as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Drew?
I just want to make sure I heard clear. So for people that spent their own money to fix their driveways?
Yes.
If they have receipts, they can submit those to be reimbursed? In Septem-
Yes, in, in September.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, but if, if a nonprofit done it, it's gone?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Drew, thank you so much. It's always good to see you.
Good to see y'all. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Avril.
Commissioners now will start with the staff update, and of course, Dane knows he's on his way.
Good afternoon, Dane.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Drew, I could say dido on a lot of the debris updates. Appreciate you kicking that off. And thank you for the partnership with North Carolina Emergency Management and pushing our priorities through to FEMA, the Corps of Engineers. We, we really appreciate that. So debris update for Bunkham County specifically. And, and what we're talking about there with that process, as a reminder, is the direct federal assistance programming that these missions, and the, the ones we're talking about are the Right-of-Way Debris Removal Program, private property debris removal, waterway debris removal, and demolition, were the four primary projects that we're talking about through the direct federal assistance. When we're talking about three point three million cubic yards, I try to throw some comparisons out, just to add a little spice. We think about, you know, my height, maybe a little bit taller, stack the debris up, run that, run that row all the way to Texas. So that's about a thousand miles of debris that we're talking about. And that's if you can get it without voids, which is impossible. But anyhow, it's a lot of debris that's been managed through this program here in Bunkham. Specifically on the right-of-way debris, as Drew mentioned, that mission is complete in Bunkham with over one point five million cubic yards being managed through that. Private property debris removal is substantially complete. There's around four thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine parcels have been cleaned up, and there's just a handful remaining that are being finished up now. So that, that, that project is also essentially complete. Waterway debris removal, that mission is complete with over one point six million cubic yards of debris removed from our waterways and tributaries. And an exciting update since we met last time, that demolition has started. So we got a chance to be out in the field last week and, and see that kickoff in, in the Black Mountain area. So we were really thankful to see that.
Again, we got to have our milestone moments. This has been a long journey, so I want to give kudos where kudos is due. And that debris removal has been something we've been working on now since January. We were told our first date was going to be February, so I'm excited. I want to take a moment to say thank you to the team for pushing through to make sure we can get our demolition started as well. So, kudos and well done.
Thank you, County Manager. Yes, very exciting. So we, they did last month about the temporary debris sites and the closeout process there. Beacon Temporary Debris Management Site is completed and closed out. Old County Landfield Temporary Debris Site is complete and closed out. What I mean by complete and closed out is there's not been material coming in, and all the material that was brought in previously has been processed and sent out. We, we still do have some punch list items that we're working through on, on these closeouts. So things like maybe some damaged pipe, those type of things. So they're working to restore the previous function of those sites prior to operating the debris sites. Kane Creek, I know that work is ongoing to restore that athletic field. I know they've brought in around two hundred and fifty tons of sand at this point. Because you think about all the operations, heavy equipment, a lot of that's compacted. So you got to, you got to restore a lot of that before you can get up to, to reseating, restabilizing. They'll be bringing in some more topsoil probably later on in the week, weather pending, probably towards Friday. And we'll make sure that's in lockstep with Parks and Rec, that Allison and her team are taking a look with that progress and making sure that that is coming along, restoring that previous function. And INCA is still active, and that should be finishing up by the end of this month. The material piles have substantially dwindled over the past several weeks. So that should be the last site that actually is in operational state for that, so. Be happy to answer any questions, Commissioners.
Questions for Dane?
Dane, on the PPDR front, as I understand it, some folks that applied for that were ineligible for any number of reasons. Am I correct in assuming someone from some agency of some kinds told those folks at this point that they were ineligible, and perhaps why? Has that happened?
Yes, Commissioner. So there was ineligibility letter, letters that went out several weeks ago, the first batch of those. And FEMA is the determining entity on what's eligible, what's not. So we worked with FEMA on those. And some examples, or some consistent themes that we saw ineligible debris on were unmaintained areas, walking trails, debris that was not designated as an immediate threat. Those were examples of debris that was, that FEMA ruled to be ineligible. So yes, letters have gone out to folks that applied through PPDR. In some instances, some debris was picked up, but not all. That was, that was documented on the, on the application process. So yes, those letters have gone out, and FEMA has another batch that is soon to be going out. And those communications are going directly to the folks that applied for PPDR.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's exciting to know that we have started on the demolition, so thanks for your work on that, on advocating. I know you all have been pushing and working toward that for a long time. How many, how many demolition projects do we have on the docket?
Yeah, so Commissioner, we, I know the first batch, so basically the ones that have reached the finish line from all the application process, the vetting at, you know, EHP, environmental historical preservation, and then FEMA actually signing off, yes, demolish these structures, they're approved. That first batch was around twenty-four. So they're, the, the subcontractor for, well, I'll just say Ashbrit, the Cores contractors, targeted to try to have at least three to four demos going per day. So they have completed six to this point, so they started last week. I think that's, that's good progress to see that. We do anticipate, when we've got a progress meeting next week with FEMA and Coor and all of our partners, to understand where the other packets are in the process, as far as, you know, are they at SHPO at the state level? And, and as they start, again, walking towards the finish line where FEMA can sign off on that, those eligible demo packets and, and keep those rolling.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioner Horton, did you have a-
I do. So is, PPDR is completely done?
Substantially, yes, ma'am, it is. So there is a handful, it's interesting, some of the demo requests, because those packets had to be pulled out, because it took a lot, different type of documentations than the straight PPDR where there is no demo. So some of those, we under, you know, like the outbuildings, FEMA's provided additional guidance that those, there's an eligibility issue with those if it's not the primary structure on the property, the primary residence. So some of those, if they were substantially damaged, those have shifted back to PPDR. So we have seen some of that kind of ebb and flow with some of the demo requests actually transition to PPDR. So to answer your question, PPR is, it's there. It's, it's pretty much complete. It's just some of those, as the demo applications, that process is finishing up. Some of those have gone to PPR, and that's getting picked up now.
I know of an area in Fairview that's very concerning, and I would like to discuss that with you at some point, please.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Dane, thank you for the great update. We appreciate all your work and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, next is Burnett. That's going to do a quick update on, on landslides.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you all for allowing me a few minutes to provide you with an update on landslides here in the county. So this, the last time I was in front of you, I shared this slide. And just a quick refresher, if you recall, we really have three primary categories that we've defined for our slides. We have the slides that impacted county property. We have individual slides that are impacting individual households. And we've been working on probably the most challenging category, and those are the larger slides that have impacted multiple properties. And we've been partnering with FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management to really develop a model. And we've selected the Grove Mount slide in Swananoa to serve as our test case. And the idea is that we're going to hopefully prove out that this test case will work, and it's scalable, and can be applied to not only other slides in Bunkham County, but throughout all of western North Carolina. And I'm going to provide you an update on these three categories, where we are today. But before we get into the update, I wanted to take a minute and just provide you all with an overview of this process that we've been working through as it relates to these large complex slides in the county. And hopefully this will help provide a little bit of understanding in terms of what this cycle looks like as it relates to the landslides. So really, at, at ten thousand feet, when you think about a landslide and what it means to stabilize a slide, there's really two phases to it. The initial phase is the engineering study that takes place. And then the second component, or second element of that life cycle, is the actual stabilization work. So working to stabilize the slide so it doesn't present any imminent threat going forward. So, real quick, just going to talk you through this. So we were able to, we, the county staff, were able to partner with North Carolina Geological Survey to take a map that they created of the slides here in the county. We overlaid that with the, our parcel map, and that really created the mapping that we needed to better understand the magnitude of these large slides impacting multiple properties. Using that map, it's sort of like our roadmap. FEMA created a landslide task force to conduct initial assessments on these slides. So we've been partnering with FEMA to conduct these initial assessments. The product of the initial assessments is a cost estimate for an architectural and engineering study. And that basically spells out, FEMA goes in, the task force assessed the slides, and said, based on some certain parameters around size and complexity and so forth, they take an estimate that says, hey, it's going to cost a million dollars to create, to do an engineering study for this particular slide. We then review that. We, we typically submit it and say, yep, we want to move forward with this. There's an approval process that takes place behind the scenes with FEMA. Ultimately, the funding gets obligated. While this is happening, we're working to identify a vendor to actually complete the engineering study, which is where we are right now with the Grove Mount slide. Once, once that takes place, we then receive the funding from North Carolina Emergency Management. FEMA obligates the funding. We actually get paid from NCEM, and then the vendor conducts the study. Now, for that stabilization phase, phase two, steps five through eight basically repeat themselves, right? And the product of that, that initial engineering study is the vendor that we, we hire ultimately provides stabilization recommendations. It's a much more in-depth study. In addition to the methodologies that they prescribe in that study, they also take a cost estimate, a swag at estimating the cost. We then, once again, submit that for FEMA. They then obligate funding, and the process starts all over again. Any questions? I know it's kind of fast.
Go ahead, Parker.
I'm just trying to understand, yeah, all this is so new. This process, the only thing that's unique about this process is the fact that's a landslide, right? So the federal kind of reimbursement process through NCEM is typical in a post-disaster situation? Am I roughly explaining that correctly?
That and the dollar amount, correct.
The dollar amount's unique in terms of how, how expensive it is?
Where, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay.
And the one thing, too, to, to, to kind of reiterate around that whole process, and that's really been a lot, where a lot of the work has taken place on our end, is coming to an agreement with NCEM around what that funding structure looks like and the timing of it. Being cognizant of the financial situation in the county. The, the one thing, the one glaring north star that we've had throughout our process is ensuring that we're, we, the folks working on this, are not putting our, putting the county in cash flow risk, right? So on the next slide, I can get into some of the specifics around where we've landed. So on the next slide, I can get into some of the specifics around where we've landed with NCEM in terms of what that payment cycle looks like.
Okay. My last question, you can answer it now or later, but it's just, I saw you mentioned NCGS. Have they, has that agency done this kind of analysis before? Like, have they worked on remediating landslides before?
No, that's not what, no. So we leveraged their information, they did survey work, and basically went out into the field using drones and other technology to identify, using GIS technology, say, hey, this is the slide, this is the map of that slide. So using that map, that GIS map, we then overlaid that onto our GIS parcel map, and then that allowed us to identify the specific properties impacted by these large slides.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Burnett before he hits his last few slides? Sorry.
Burnett, it's important to note that this is a pilot, that then we can replicate across western North Carolina.
That's right, exactly. Yep. All right. Okay. All right, so quickly, I'm just being cognizant of time here. When we think of those three categories, I'm going to give you all just a brief update on where we stand with those three. So for the slides occurring on county or public property, there were two, one at Fort McCormick Place and one at the landslide. We are moving forward with the engineering study at Fort McCormick. I know there has been a vendor that has been selected, I believe there's a signed contract, and the timeline, as I understand it, is roughly about 90 days, three months, that we should have some results as it relates to an engineering study. For the individual slides impacting individual properties, once again, the state's hazard mitigation grant program is the most viable path forward, and there have been 31 households that have applied to the HMGP program so far. And then when we look at the large slides, the task force, the FEMA task force, has conducted assessments on 55 of the large slides. They have developed architectural and engineering cost estimates for 39 of those slides, and the total cost so far is in excess of $9 million. We have also selected a vendor to conduct the Grove Mont engineering study, so that's very exciting. We'll be working with that vendor to finalize a contract, and we hope to have that completed sometime in the early fall. And Mr. Sloan, the funding agreement that we have arrived at with NCEM is that they have agreed to front us 75% of the estimated cost for the engineering study with the balance to be paid upon completion of the work. So assuming this test case proves to be successful, we will then move forward with the engineering studies for the remaining of the slides, the remaining slides. Any questions?
Okay, maybe I'm missing something here. So that gets us through the engineering study, and then what's the process for actually doing the stabilization?
Great. So if you remember back to the process now, there's really two phases here, right? You have the engineering study, which is the first step. So for Grove Mont, let's just talk to Grove Mont for an example. So we're going to engage with this vendor to conduct the engineering study, and that engineering study will be a detailed plan of to stabilize this slope, here's what we recommend you do, and here is the estimated cost to do that. We'll then take that engineering study and submit it back to FEMA and say, hey, we have a stabilization project we'd like to move forward with. Then it goes to the approval process through FEMA, hopefully the funding gets appropriated to us, and then we move forward with selecting a vendor to actually conduct the stabilization work.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Burnett?
And then I guess, sorry, one more. Well, I know this is the pilot, but let's focus on the pilot. Then, do you have a sense of the timeline till we actually get it stabilized? Do you have any sense of that?
I don't. Unfortunately, I don't, I can't in any intelligent manner provide you a timeline on that. I know, like I said, our next most immediate step with the Grove Mont slide is to finalize a contract with a vendor we selected. Once we're able to do that, we should have a timeline around how long the engineering study will take. Then, from there, it's, you know, without knowing the cost and so forth, that's all got to go through FEMA approval, so unfortunately, I can't, yeah, provide you with any kind of...
Well, and I just want to say thank you so much to staff because I really felt like we should be having help, should, too bad, the state left, but from the state, you know, having more support at the state level or what have you. But thank you to our staff who's really stepped up in figuring out how to work through this process, because it's clearly something we've never had to deal with before.
And I don't believe it's anything that the state has dealt before either, so we are actually creating, you've heard the phrase written right in the book as we're going ahead. So the state has given us the chance to help create this process for them. And what I wanted to make sure Burnett pointed out is, once we get this pilot, the state will then use this in other counties and other cities across the West.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being leaders, wish we didn't have to be.
A question I have is, we're in uncharted territory here, and the concern I have is when you look at, say, like Craigtown over in Fairview, you know, that's going to be awfully expensive. But at the end of the day, do we have any idea who's going to pay for this? Or will we be left with?
So what we were just describing is getting the costs and taking it back to state and FEMA. The intent would be that state and FEMA will help pay for some of that.
Some of it.
So they would normally, is the cost share between state and federal? So normally, it would be a 75-25 with state and federal. There's no, in North Carolina, there's no local match from the local government to pay for disaster.
The concern I have, and maybe you've answered, 75-25, that would take care of all of it.
Right.
Yeah. We'll see.
All right.
Thanks, Burnett.
Thanks, Burnett. Appreciate it.
The last Helene update is really to talk about our Helene recovery plan, and Kathleen is on her way up to walk us through the projects that's identified and get some input. And Commissioners, because of the time, we'll have this as our last update. Oh, no, we have Robert as our last update, because if we get done early, if not, we can push Robert to presentations on the regular agenda.
What about Eric as well?
He knew that he was probably going to get pushed, though, but we haven't told Robert that yet.
Okay.
Evidence by Eric being gone. I'm joking. I know, I'm messing with you.
Hi, Kathleen, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. So I am here to speak about the draft projects from Buncombe County for the Helene recovery plan. Before I go into the projects specifically, just want to provide a little bit of context, reminders about the structure that will hold these projects and the process through which we've developed them. So you've seen this before, but as a reminder, what a recovery plan is, what our Helene recovery plan will be, is a collaboration between Buncombe County, the city of Asheville, and the five towns within the county. It is tailored to each local government's scope, so you will see projects for Buncombe County that reflect the government functions that the county has authority and responsibility for, as guided by the state, as well as each of the towns and the city. It is reflective of community voice, grounded in impacts and need, what we know happened during Helene, what that has shown us about the needs in our community, aligned to organizational objectives. And it is a list of projects that we can reasonably plan to deliver on. So a couple of points on that. One, you're going to hear the word projects a lot while I'm up here speaking, please know that we are using that term pretty broadly. In the context of our recovery projects, a project may be initiative, a study, it might be a portfolio of work that falls under the same umbrella. And when we say that we can reasonably plan to deliver on, that kind of helps bring us over to what the recovery plan is not. This is not an overall community plan. We have heard in the recovery coordination team time and time again when speaking with peers and folks from communities that have been through events comparable to Helene, that recovery belongs to the community. We know that the Helene recovery plan from Buncombe County government cannot address everything that needs to happen. We understand that community partners, nonprofit organizations, others in the community will be doing a lot of work. You'll see some of those alignments reflected in the plan, but we recognize that there is work helping to repair the damage of Helene, build back better, that may not be in our projects exclusively. It's also not a funding plan, it's not an implementation plan, it's not necessarily a guarantee that these projects will come to fruition, because we know that things will change. The activities, the priorities laid out in this plan may not be exactly what we're talking about three, five, seven years from now. Federal and state programs will evolve, funding sources will shift. We've seen that. The work of implementation will come after adoption of the recovery plan. The purpose of this plan itself is to say, this is what we've heard, this is what we understand, we can reasonably do to address that need. Now let's put together the pieces, the timelines, the details of implementation, including the funding plan. So that's what it is. How are we going to do it? Well, first and foremost, as a reminder, this process really kicked off in April and May with the Envision Buncombe survey to hear from the community, listening to Commissioners, listening to staff. We took that information in July and August, worked closely with county staff, our subject matter experts, to develop projects. I'll speak more on that in just a minute. And the intention is that through this project development process in September, we will be able to share the draft strategic plan with Commissioners and open that plan up for public comment, to say, hey, we listened to you in April and May, here's what we heard, did we get it right? So there will be a second round opportunity for public feedback based on the draft plan with the goal of adopting in November. As a reminder of that engagement that we conducted, the Envision Buncombe survey, we received over 2,600 survey responses through a digital media marketing campaign, as well as events held in 13 ZIP codes across the county. Through that process, we heard from the community about priorities. I want to be clear, these top 10 priorities, these are not the only thing we heard from our community that they need to repair, restore, rebuild, address the damage from Tropical Storm Helene, and also be less vulnerable and more resilient to future disaster events. But these were the top 10 priorities, things like investing in infrastructure, focusing on preparedness and resiliency, wildfire prevention, floodplain management, restoring our stream banks, rebuilding parks, preserving flood-prone property from further development, landslide stabilization, building more affordable housing, and addressing food insecurity in our community. I'll speak about how those are reflected in the plan in more depth shortly, but want to make sure you all are aware of how the projects that we'll be looking at came to fruition. So I just spoke about what we heard from the community, working with Commissioners and our subject matter experts to understand the impacts of the storm. We took that feedback and worked really closely with our recovery support functions and county departments and staff to elicit submissions for projects that would address those needs, that would reflect the voice that we heard from the community. Through those requests, we received nearly 100 project ideas submitted by county staff for evaluation. So we formed an interdisciplinary review committee of around 20 folks from all different departments, all different areas of knowledge and skill sets to evaluate those projects, which led to the 31 projects that you will see recommended today. Before we go into the projects, just a note on that evaluation, how were, how was that review committee asked to evaluate the proposed projects? We looked at organizational alignment, so again, can we do this? Is this something that the county does? Strategic alignment? We spoke at your previous briefing a few weeks ago about the 2030 strategic plan and alignment of the recovery plan to the vision and objectives laid out therein. Community alignment, is this what we heard during Envision Buncombe? Necessity, is this right? Is this what our community needs to address the impacts of Helene? Looking at that impact as well as resiliency and risk reduction, so not just building back what was there before, but how can we build back in a way that we are less vulnerable to future events? We won't just be rebuilding the same thing we built last year the next time we get a big storm. Cost and funding and feasibility were also considered. So with that said, I'm, we're going to look at the specific projects shortly, but before that, want to just give you all a little bit of context about how what we heard in Envision Buncombe and that community voice is reflected in the 31 draft projects you'll see today. I believe you've been provided a physical document with the projects on them. In that document, you'll be able to see these icons for the different community priorities and how they are reflected. So a couple notes on the numbers on this slide here. The first is that if we have any passionate mathematicians in the group, you might notice this does not add up to 31. Some projects align to more than one priority. For example, a project to address wildfire risk might also be considered disaster preparedness. Another point I want to be really clear on here is that, as I said, we're using the term projects broadly. So if you, just because you see a set number next to one of these priorities, it doesn't mean, for example, rebuilding parks, there's one project. I want to be clear, that ought not be interpreted to say that we are going to commit to work around one county park. That one project could encompass all the damage to all county parks, or an effort around restoring stream banks. There's not just one area that will be addressed through that. And of course, we'll speak to that when we get to the projects. Want to be really clear on that. And then, of course, this other category, as I mentioned, when we looked at the Envision Buncombe survey results, these are the top 10 priorities. That's not even close to everything we heard from our community. Things like economic recovery, support for our workforce and small businesses, or addressing the impacts of, on mental health in the community and the increase in trauma. Things like that also rose to the surface, so we do have a good amount of that work identified in our projects as well. And then the final point before we get into the projects themselves, that strategic alignment. So I spoke about the recovery plan as a list of projects we believe we can realistically achieve. This is a very tactical document. You're not going to see goals or a vision for recovery in the recovery plan, because those things are established by the priorities the Commissioners have laid out in our strategic plan. So for every single recovery project, it aligns closely to one of the focus areas and a specific objective under the focus area in our strategic plan, and you can see a bit about that breakdown here. So that is how we will look at the projects themselves, through that alignment to the strategic plan. So looking at growth and development, for the sake of time, I'll speak very briefly on these projects, but I invite you to interrupt, ask questions, and again, you have been provided a document with a bit more context for each than what's on the slides themselves. But the first project under growth and development is to support affordable housing development. This is three projects on county-owned property to support advancement of both rental and ownership units available to residents in the county. Code of Ordinance amendments, these amendments, the Code of Ordinance, will be necessary to join FEMA's community rating system, which will be a benefit to community members when it comes to flood insurance eligibility and the rates for flood insurance. Commercial district revitalization, so supporting economic recovery in impacted areas, including Barnardsville, Fairview, and Swananoa. Down payment assistance, money to help people who lost their home buy a new home. Essentially, home repair, same idea, funds to help folks who otherwise will not be able to repair the damage of Helene to their home. To do so, sewer extension and septic mitigation, so extending some of our septic system to parts of unincorporated Buncombe County, which will support economic recovery and goals around that. And then the Swananoa Small Area and Resilience Plan, this is a plan that was identified in our 2043 comp plan as necessary, and of course, the impacts of Helene have expedited that work. Our next focus area is economic development. We have three projects under the scope of this focus area. Public art, the intention here is to commission and install public art pieces in key storm-affected areas, recognizing both the impacts of that visual sign of recovery, as well as the role of art and visual culture in our community. Skills, training, and employment. Skills, training, and employment program support. So the STEP program is a pre-existing program in partnership with Health and Human Services and AB Tech. This project seeks to increase enrollment and graduation rates for Helene-impacted folks in particular, as well as small business grants to offer financial support to small business owners impacted the storm and enduring recovery as our economy continues to recover from the impacts of the storm. The next focus area is community health. We have five projects within this scope, including a project to address food security in our community. This is a great example of where the word project might more accurately be described as an initiative. This includes efforts to update a food security, food security policy, to assess weaknesses, vulnerabilities, and gaps in our food system in the community, and then work closely with community partners to develop strategies to address those gaps and help make those resources more accessible to folks deeply impacted by the storm in our community. There's also a community memory project with the libraries to archive, document, and create sort of a record of the impacts of Helene in the community. Cultural asset restoration. This is repairing and enhancing to reduce vulnerability to county parks, libraries, and community centers that were damaged during the storm. Mental health trainings and support. The intention here is to develop and implement a comprehensive training model and plan to offer trainings to both service providers, sort of a helping the helpers model, as well as community members overall, to just increase our resiliency and ability to meet the increasing trauma in our community as a result of the storm. And then a social services emergency response plan to ensure that in the event of a future disaster, we are able to effectively respond and meet the full breadth of social services-related needs for the community as a part of that disaster response. You there with me? Two more, two more focus areas. This is the big one. Public safety, I will note, this is the focus area within the strategic plan, where we saw some significant changes in the draft plan after Tropical Storm Helene to increase our focus on disaster preparedness and hazard mitigation efforts. So it probably should be no surprise that this is where the greatest amount of recovery projects fell. So we are focused on community organization support. Anybody who is here at the end of September and October knows that government did not respond to this storm alone. We had a breadth of partners and organizations show up to help hold our community during this time. We will be reflecting that in our recovery projects as well and supporting them. Community risk reduction campaign. So this is for individuals, families, the people in our community, to raise awareness of how to keep themselves safe and be disaster-ready and prepared to be as safe as possible to a range of events, including wildfires. Critical facility upgrades. So this is upfits and hardening to make our key facilities less likely to go down or be significantly impacted in future events, to be more resilient so that the phones can keep running, but the key functions we need to respond will be working. Disaster response, heavy equipment. So this is a project to evaluate our needs, understand what equipment did we not have that we wished we had during that immediate response and recovery effort, excuse me, response and rescue efforts, and identify the best way to procure those goods. Will it be purchased, contract, mutual aid? Making sure that we have access to the equipment we need in any future event. Emergency Operations Center. This is a project to construct a weather-resilient emergency operations center that has the space, the technological equipment, and the functionality to safely house people to respond as effectively as possible and with all the equipment and technology they need in the event of many different types of disasters or emergencies. An emergency shelter facility. The intention here is to construct a building that will have steady state, blue skies, use maybe something like a recreation center that we can use year-round, but if we need a shelter, it also is big enough and has all the core resources and functionality to keep people safe and act as a shelter. Public safety continued. Landslide mitigation, we just spoke a lot about that, right? So this is a commitment to conduct those assessments and do the work you just heard about from Burnett. Natural hazard monitoring. This is a pretty broad project. This includes everything like potential landslide monitoring, stream gauges, weather monitoring technology to help make sure that we can not only be prepared, be as aware of we can is what might be coming, but also then alert and get the word out to folks as effectively as possible. A preparedness action plan. This is a comprehensive plan to implement recommendations of the after-action report to ensure that we, we have learned lessons from what we've all just been through and can be as prepared as possible to respond in the future. Public safety communications resilience. Public safety communications to most of us, we might say 911, that's what we're talking about here. Being able to call for help, make sure that call gets through, and that the systems that need to speak to each other can do so as effectively as possible in blue skies, as well as in disaster situations. Vehicle resilience, assess and improve fuel and energy resilience for county vehicles. So if we can't get to our gas supply, we can still move around under any set of circumstances. And then wildfire protection plans. This project seeks to develop and implement a comprehensive community wildfire protection plan, which, there are a lot of pieces to that, but we heard loud and clear that that is important to the community at this time. Final focus area is energy and environment. Fleet and facilities restoration. This is essentially saying, all the vehicles, all the heavy equipment, any facility that was damaged by the storm, we will replace those and do that in a resilient manner. Open space property. This project is addressing the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and that it is entirely likely that through buyouts from that program, the county will have additional property under its portfolio with very, very strict guidelines about what can and can't be built there. Emphasis on can't. Will largely be open spaces. So creating a comprehensive plan for how to use that open space. Resiliency hubs. This is a commitment to ensure that existing facilities, any new facilities, are built with that weather resiliency in mind, that if the power goes out, we have a backup option on-site, and that those locations that have that redundancy, that weather resiliency, can be set up to, as resource centers, as places that people can come to get basic needs and information about what's going on. And then stream stabilization. This is work to not only repair the damage to our streams and flood-prone areas, but to mitigate potential future flooding impacts in the community and reduce risk to the most destructive damage from flooding in the future. So those are all the projects. I just went very quickly, don't want to take Robert's time. But with that said, it is very important that we hear from you all at this time, sharing that very, very brief highlight. So I've got a few questions here that we are particularly interested to hear about. Are we missing anything? Is there anything that you would ask that we consider in phasing the implementation when it comes to impact? This is crucial. Or this could be good, but you might need to think about this first. Or I can't even answer those questions because I didn't hear this key priority. Really eager for that feedback, but also open it up to any other input suggestions y'all want to make sure we hear. Well, these are draft projects at this point in the process.
The only, well, this is great. A lot of work, obviously, has gone into this. It's a really thoughtful list, and I see a lot of really important key priorities on here. So thank you for your work and for everybody that was involved. The only one that struck me was new sewer and water out to unincorporated areas. I know that we're also working on our five-year strategic plan, and I believe one of the goals on there is targeting 70% of new development towards areas that are already targeted for growth. I just want to make sure that those two goals are aligning so that we're not creating unnecessary sprawl, and when we are building that out, it really is targeted to those key growth areas.
Thank you, absolutely. I will share that with the folks involved in that work.
I'm sure I'll have some feedback, but I haven't had a chance to read over it yet, so I will get back to you.
I guess I wanted to ask, what is the natural mechanism for how we follow up? I imagine all of us are going to think a lot faster when we're not under the gun of 10 minutes. No pressure on you.
Oh, please, please take this and read it, mark it up, and get it back to me, if you can do, or Rachel, I would say, at this point, if you can get that to me, or Rachel, or even Kathleen. So there's lots of ways to get that back, but I would.
It's our deadline.
When do we want to go out? September? September 16th is the next time we'll be coming to share any updates. So that would be a pretty organic timing to see, okay, we heard you, here's how we've reflected that.
Right, so if you can get this back to us by the end of the month, that way we will have time to get back to subject matter experts and get some real deep conversations for you, September 16th.
Thank you.
When are we going to the community?
Immediately after that.
After 16?
Yeah, that will open the public comment period.
Yes, if you can get that back by the end of the month, and I'm saying that a second time because I know Sarah is good at following through, so.
The last work day of August is Friday, August 29th. So close of business, Friday, August 29th.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thanks, y'all. Kathleen, thank you, and to everyone who had input on this, this is really terrific, and I'm excited to see what everyone sends back.
Thank you. And there is just one more slide about next steps. We just spoke on them, but essentially, it will be to produce a draft plan. The full draft plan, these are the Buncombe County as an organization recovery projects. The full draft plan will reflect, as I mentioned earlier, the towns and the city, much like our residents live their lives, the lines are not firm or strict. The plan will reflect that. And we will release that for public comment in September, modify it based on that feedback, and come back to you all with a plan that we are hopefully ready to adopt in November.
That's great. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
So commissioners, we have 10 minutes, and I have a very short item, the community block grant. We'll bring that up, and then we'll take the other two.
That is exactly what I was going to ask if we could do. So Robert, you'll be on presentations at 5:00, and Nancy, I think you're listed to, is that it? The community development block grant with Nancy. You're up. Thanks for the flexibility to our staff.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring this quarterly update back to you. So our block grant was awarded and executed in the contract for $400,000 back in 2023, and we had the home repair program going with Asheville Area Habitat as our sub-recipient. Everything was well underway, the end of the summer last year and into the fall, and then Helene hit. So Asheville Area Habitat Humanity had to regroup. First priority was to take care of themselves and the impact of the storm on them. And then they turned their focus to the repair and what the actual need was in the community. And so at that point in January, early winter, they notified us that they were going to need to exit the contract that they had with us. So understanding that, we reached out to North Carolina Commerce, excuse me, Rural Economic Development Division to let them know, initiated the discussions about what our options were, how we were going to approach that, and the potential uses for this, focusing on recovery, that being our priority at this point. So they have been wonderful, understanding, they've been through this before. So they understand, they support us, they're willing to help us. We've had great conversations with them, and we're keeping them regularly updated as we work through the recovery plan and figuring out what is going to be the best use for this funding and how we can actually utilize it as part of the recovery plan. So we are looking at that, looking at how we can align it between the neighborhood revitalization grant funding and the disaster recovery piece. And they can overlap, and there are ways that we can actually utilize the funding for some of those projects. So we will be waiting for the approval of that plan in November, and then we will go back to Commerce, Rural Economic Development Division, our support system, and make a proposal or look at projects and how those would work out. This project, this grant funding, goes through June of 2026. So we're on a short timeframe with where we are in that. We'd already gotten a one-year extension, just kind of getting the program up and running. So we will take it back to them and get an approval on what we can actually utilize the funding for. Are there any questions?
Yes, I can't help but ask this. I mean, we know there's so much need for home repair already, like, we're all aware of that.
Yes.
So isn't there some way that we, that there's, we can work with someone to go ahead and implement a home repair program? Like, is Habitat willing to step back in and do this work now, or?
They have a lot of work. I follow their dashboard and to see how many applications they actually get a week, how many they've actually accomplished. I think they're almost up to 70 that they've been able to complete in the timeframe. So that's been, let's say, the last eight months, seven months. And their number, I can't remember off the top of my head how many they're already dealing with, but I think their capacity is probably limited at this point, even though I understand they have been able to expand staff, but it's, they're just not at a point with capacity. So I'm in touch with them, and we communicate, and I'm watching their dashboard to see, you know, what they can actually do.
Are there any other organizations that would be able to?
When I put RFP out, had to do it twice. Put it out in the spring and then had to put it out a second time in July to get an applicant. So we were really pleased and excited that we had somebody who would work with this funding. There's a lot of layers to what the requirements are with this funding, so it was nice to have them. So at this point, I do not have an organization that has stepped forward, you know, for that type of funding at this point. So there are lots of options and ways that we can use the funding.
And we're limited in with organizations in Buncombe County who do this type of work and don't have to start something new to do this.
The Long-Term Recovery Group has been really great to follow and liaise with both the Housing Construction Group and the Housing Assistance Group to kind of see who are the organizations that are coming in and who's stepping up with capacity. So we're keeping an eye on that to see where our resources are and what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Appreciate your time.
We appreciate it. You and your work. All right, commissioners, are there any other topics for discussion before we adjourn for a short break? All right, we will amend our agenda to include the mission letter and also presentations from Robert Brown and Eric Cragger. All right, we are adjourned for a short break.